Welcome to the Larkspur Planning Commission meeting of April 23, 2024. Could we please have a roll call? First, present.
Commissioner Swisher.
Present.
Commissioner Hull.
Present.
Commissioner Campbell.
Present.
And Commissioner Wagstaff is absent tonight, so you have a quorum.
Thank you. So we start with any public comments on matters which are not on the agenda. Thank you. Would you introduce yourself when you?
Good evening, my name is Matthew Hartzell, I live at 38 Loma Vista Avenue, Larkspur, and I want to make sure everybody knows that there's going to be a public meeting, open house regarding the Golden Gate Bridge District's planned three-story parking garage structure at the Larkspur Ferry Terminal. That meeting will be on Tuesday, May 14th, from 5:00 to 7:00 PM at the Drake's Landing Community Room, 300 Drake's Landing Road. I hope that many of the Larkspur City Council members, planning commissioners, and citizens will attend this meeting and let the Bridge District know what they think about this proposed parking garage structure. I know that I, for one, strongly oppose it and think it is a bad thing for Larkspur. It's unnecessary, there are many better ways for the Bridge District to get people to the ferry, such as completing gaps in the active transportation network and bus feeder services, bike share, and that adding a new parking garage will only exacerbate the park, the traffic problem in the city. The ferry terminal is already one of the biggest sources of traffic in the county, and the parking lot currently sits at 50% capacity on normal days. So there's really no need for this parking garage, it's going to be a visual blight on the city and an environmental blight. And yeah, so hopefully the city will make its opinion known and let the Bridge District know that we don't want this parking garage in our city. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Do we have any other comments? Matters not on the agenda? Okay, thank you, so we'll move on. The first item on the public agenda meeting tonight is 300 Alexander Avenue, that's project number 2407. Could we please have the staff report?
Yes, give me just a moment here to share my screen. Okay, well, having a technical difficulty here, give me one minute.
You know, while you're getting that ready, I'll start by saying that I did the site visit and reviewed almost all of the document materials without realizing that I actually knew the family that were playing. They are a family that are at my school, my youngest daughter's school, so I can just safely say that I did all my review without any prejudice and any bias, so I'll just make that for the record.
There we go, all right, sorry about that. So, good evening commissioners, the project before you is PLN 2407, which proposes a new 4,200 square foot two-story residence and detached ADU. The property is located on Alexander Avenue between Loma Vista and Pepper Avenue, it's highlighted in blue on the left there for you. In order to construct the project as designed, the applicants are requesting approval of the following entitlements, that's just design review, floor area ratio exception, a slope use permit, and heritage tree removal permit. The home will be constructed in a similar location to the previous home with the ADU to the west, it'll be a new pool and patio area located at the rear. Here are the proposed floor plans for you, if you can see those. And some elevations of the proposed building. The project proposes a floor area ratio of .3, .34, excuse me, where .32 would be allowed due to the slope of the lot. This is just a snippet of the floor area study that's included in your packet with the subject property in bold, the average in the area is .33, so they're asking for just .01 above the average. It also proposes, as I mentioned, to remove three heritage trees which are highlighted on yellow in your, on the screen. There are a total of five other trees being proposed for removal, but they do not meet the heritage tree definition, and those you can see on, as the X is on the map there. And in order to complete the project as proposed, the applicants are requesting a slope use permit for approximately 680 cubic yards of cut and fill, per the provided soils report, much of the existing top layer must be removed in order to place the footings in stable bedrock. And you've received several comments on the proposed project, a number of comments and support from community members, and there are two comments from directly adjacent neighbors. I would say all kind of in general, from the two neighbors in general support with some requests for modifications from 8 Loma Vista, which is the property behind and kind of to the west of 300 Alexander, they're concerned with impacts to their ADU at the rear of their home, the mass and height of the proposed structure at 300 Alexander, and impacts to the historic nature of their home. And the 101 Pepper Avenue neighbors are concerned additionally with the height and mass of the east wing of the proposed home, which would be where the garage is proposed, and some aspects of the construction management plan, which are like the location of the, or the storage and refuse of materials. So staff's recommendation is that the commission approve the project, subject to findings, conditions of approval, and a Class II CEQA exemption. I'm available for any questions that you have, and the applicant, and the architect, and the audience as well. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Do we have any questions for staff? Nope, okay, could we please have the applicant or the architect? And I'm gonna make one request, just to speed things up, if you could maybe address any of the comments which were raised by the two neighbors? That would be helpful.
I will address them.
Thank you.
Good evening commissioners, my name is Jared Polsky, and I'm here with my associate, Laura Van Omburg, and we are Tommy and Shannon's architects. If you could put on our amended site plan? They don't have a pointer, so I'll have to point. Great, thank you. Shannon and Tommy are current Larkspur residents, they live on Magnolia with their three kids, just a few blocks away on Alexander, from Alexander. They love the city and want to build their forever home on this site. The existing house has, if you notice, has fallen into terrible disrepair, and has been studied by the city's historical architect and was found not of historical significance. First of all, I want to thank Alex for a very well-written staff report, I appreciate his recommendation. And to reiterate, the project is not asking for a variance, there's a minor FAR exception as he described, and we're well within the range of FARs in the neighborhood. The proposed house is pushed into the hillside, the bottom floor will be a slab-on-grade, and the proposed height will be well under the 30-foot maximum height limit allowed in the zoning app in this zone. We've used a number of mass-reducing design techniques, and I think you'd most, we might most agree, that the house presents a very handsome facade and massing. The materials and colors fit in well with the site and the neighborhood. The corner of the proposed garage, as you can see here, is, just touches the six-foot side yard setback, and it's angled away from the neighbor's garage at 101 Pepper. And we're proposing just one small window in the, on the second floor, in a toilet room, with a five-foot-six-inch-high sill, so we don't think this will disturb their privacy. The second story over the garage will not have any negative impact on our neighbor. The closest building is actually the neighbor's garage, not their house, and that neighbor to the east has a pool, and we've, we've basically dotted out rough location of the pool that we saw from Google Earth, and it's very close to the common property line. But again, with one small toilet room window with a five-foot-six sill, I don't think will disturb their privacy on their pool. We worked with Chris Papademos, an acoustical engineer, so that the compressor of the electric heat pump will be properly screened, and we made sure that the decibel rating at the property line will be well within the acceptable range. Our proposed, our proposed pool site is sited closest to the point of the pool, the closest point of the pool will be 12-foot-10 from the property line and 40-foot-six distance from the neighbor's house. With fencing and screen planting, the proposed pool will be well screened from both neighbors to the east and to the north. David Svengroß, the neighbor to the north at 8 Loma Vista, brought up a number of concerns. So Laura and Tommy and I visited his home yesterday, he was very gracious, David noted that he's concerned that the part of the house that is now within approximately three foot of their common property line, he has, I can point to it, is, the doorway will be impacted by the proposed property line fence. We need to, but we need to fence the property because there's a pool on the property, so he, he want, he wants us to just provide planting as a screen, but that's just not going to work on this site. So he also expressed some concerns about the proximity of the ADU to his house, and though the ADU is not up for design review, we've offered to move the ADU further down from the house, and even offered to jog the fence line, essentially giving him extra land, you can see that on the drawing, to facilitate his egress from the lower door. We have two other drawings, two and three. We want to show you our proposed, not that one. I think that's six. Well, as that's coming up, I'll describe to you what you're about to see. We've, we were offering to recite the ADU if the commission agrees, and we could recite it so it's much further from his house. Well, this, this is the way it's sited now, and the next drawing will show you how it could be, that, that's the reciting of it. So we're happy to, to adjust the ADU location if the commission so desires. He was, unfortunately, Mr. Svengroß was not really satisfied with this offer, also wanted us to change the roof of the proposed house to a flat roof design to reduce his view of the roof. In our opinion, I think you would agree, a flat roof just doesn't fit this style of home, and seeing a flat roof is, I think, more, could be more disturbing than overlooking a dark composition shingle roof that is sloping away from his view. He also suggested that we lower the whole house and rear patio by two feet. The lower floor is already proposed as a slab-on-grade, and the house is buried into the hill, lowering the second floor and rear patio would dramatically increase the cut and offhole numbers to very, for a very limited effect. He also suggested lowering the plate height at the second floor, and frankly, we work in three-dimensional, 3D software, and we've really carefully studied that space, and it works just right at 10-foot-six as proposed. If the commission wants, of course, we'd begrudgingly confirm, willing to lower the house, but you know, when you, when you, it's a big room, and when the plate height is at 10.6, it just looks right. Tommy and Shannon have reached out to many neighbors, and as you can see, they've garnered a broad support from the neighborhood. They have, I think there's nine letters of support. I think the home will be respectful and a handsome addition to the neighborhood, and I hope you can support Tommy and Shannon's request. I'm here with Brad Ixtie, our landscape architect, so if you have any questions, and Shannon and Tommy would be happy to say a few words. Do you have any questions for me?
So when you say you're going to recite the ADU, so as I see it now, the ADU, which I guess is at the south elevation, it lines up with the house?
Right.
As it is now, so you're basically staggering it by, what, three feet?
Well, we, I, I think about three feet, it moves instead of being four foot from the property line.
Yeah, I see, you're gonna take it off a little bit?
Yeah.
Okay. And you don't substantially see that as having an impact on aesthetically your design?
No, no, I don't think it had a lineup. It, it, we decided would be nice to line it up, but when we shifted it, it looked just fine.
Okay, actually, I think it actually looks a little better, to be honest.
Yeah.
Sorry, just to clarify, how much are you moving it by?
I think we're moving it by four, five feet, a little over five feet.
Okay.
Sliding towards the street away from.
Away from there.
How much?
Got it, thank you.
Not further to the east. To the west, yes. And we, we'll provide the staff with a revised site plan. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Sounds like the applicant, the Lamana, so?
Hi, everyone, my name's Shannon Kruger, and I'm here with my husband Tommy Lamana regarding our future homesite. I grew up in Marin, I've lived here my whole life, and I'm raising my family, six, four, and one-year-old here in Larkspur, and we love living here. As soon as we moved, we knew this was going to be forever for us, and a big part of that is the aesthetic of this town, and we really appreciate that we're all held to a high standard, and we really kept that in mind when designing this house, and we're really grateful to Jared and Laura and their team, because it's a challenging lot, and we think they did a great job of finding something that really suits the neighborhood while maintaining our design aesthetic, and we are enthusiastic about many decades to come in Larkspur.
Thank you very much.
Also, in addition to our others, all of our neighbors wanted to sign this and put their addresses onto statements of their support. So it shows them everything, and everyone's very excited, I think, to see this house change around.
Right, thank you. Do you have anyone else from your team that? Does anyone want to address the comments about the landscaping and the bushes?
I'm Brad Ixtie from Imprints Landscape Architecture, and I believe there's some comments about hedge heights and not blocking views, and I have a list of, of privacy hedge possible plants, and we're happy to work with neighbors and maintain plants at a height that is respectful for privacy and for maintaining views, and you know, I believe all the hedges that I have on the list, we were thinking they are going to be six to 10 feet in height and not taller than that, so I believe there's maybe a comment of hedges that might get 20 feet tall, and that was never the goal of the privacy plantings. And I'm happy to answer any questions, if you have any.
Brad, hey, how are you?
Hey.
Pitsporum sinotes, what are you thinking of?
There's pitosporum margery Shannon, which, which can easily be maintained to eight feet. I don't believe I have pitosporum tonyfolium, but that can be maintained to eight to 10 feet as well. All the hedges, if you keep after them and don't let them, you know, get up to the 15-feet height that someone might want to get to be, they can all be maintained to six to 10 feet in height. Perfect.
Thank you.
Sure.
Do we have any other comments from the applicant's team? Oh, okay. Would you like to make a? I just want to check, is there anything else from the applicants? No, great, well, thank you, so yeah, let's move on to public comment. We have two people in the room, I think, who are going to make public comments, so yeah, if you'd like to come up.
Hi there, I'm Greg Riddle, I'm here with my wife, Marla. And we've been, we've lived at 101 Pepper for, I guess, over 30 years now. And I can certainly see how, you know, neighbors who just drive on Alexander past the existing house would be wildly enthusiastic about this project, we would join that in applauding their, their efforts there, because certainly this will be an improvement over what we've lived with for 30 years. So we're, we're absolutely delighted that the property is being developed. I do have, we do have concerns about the location of the, and the construction plan with respect to the project and how it impacts our pool area, which is immediately to the east of the project, it's, our pool is about six feet away from the fence. The fence is at its closest point to the new construction, five feet, seven inches from the, at least where the story pole is. And so let me just run through some of the concerns that I have, like, the construction management plan calls for debris box, concrete washout area, and porta potty, which are just right next to our, our pool area. We use the pool area throughout the year, but on virtually a daily basis from May to probably September. And that seems to me that could, you know, we're talking about a 16-month construction period and having those things, and a debris box as well as a porta potty and the concrete washout area right next to the pool area, where we're trying to enjoy our, our, our pool and entertain, it seems a little unreasonable to me. They're also moving, as we heard, 600 cubic yards of soil during the construction process, and we obviously have a concern about, you know, we get wind a lot in Larkspur, as you may know, and the wind in this particular area swirls generally comes from the south toward the east, and it can just blow stuff onto our, our property. I'm the pool boy for the pool, and there's an existing black locust and a privet there that shed debris into the pool constantly, I'm delighted to get rid of those trees, but I don't want to replace it with another, another problem. The, 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 there are a couple of condensers that are proposed to be located right next to our pool area. I know I saw the, the sound report, the Papadom, Papademos report that had a color map that shows a 38 to 30 decibel noise level for our pool area, right where our pool is, and I note that their pool area is not impacted by the, by the sound from the, from the condensers. I know that's under the 40 decibel legal limit, but it is a nuisance, and it is somewhat irritating that we could have a nice warm day where we're both enjoying the pool, and we've got to live with the, you know, the really substantial sound of the HVAC going off. The, the, I guess I'm concerned about the, the, you know, the bushes that will be on the property line, and if they're privates and they shed and everything, but if there's a maintenance program where they're kept to a reasonable height, that's all fine. Our, our biggest concern, though, is the impact of the, of the mass of the structure right next to our pool area, and I've sent a number of pictures of the story poles, I hope you've had a chance to, to review, but it is a, it is a massive structure, and it substantially interferes with the, the afternoon sun, and you know, I can look even today, or not today, but on a sunny day a couple of days ago, I could see the, the shadows from the flags on our pool, so in the afternoon, our pool will be in shade, whereas now it's in sunshine or dappled sunshine from the existing black lo, locust and privet. So that has a, has a significant, I think, material adverse effect on, on our property. And we've, my wife called the architect to try to get him to come over and just look for yourself, see, see the impact of this structure on our pool area, and he said he was too busy. So, but I think you really have to visit the site, certainly if you walk in front of the house, it's beautiful, it will be beautiful, but I think you have to look at it from the perspective of the close neighbors, both ourselves and, and Dave as well, because it really will have an impact, particularly, you know, putting our pool area in the, in the, in the shadow is, I think, a material adverse effect, and that's what I would like to see some flexibility on, in terms of maybe moving the structure a little bit more towards the west, and maybe making some sacrifices with respect to the ADU, or the patio between the ADU and the, and the, and the main house, or maybe lowering the, eliminating the attic space, or lowering the ceilings, as I think Dave has suggested. But, so, you know, it's kind of a mixed blessing, I, I certainly think it's a beautiful design, and I certainly agree with the other neighbors that it's a magnificent improvement over what is existing, but I do think these aspects of the, of the construction will have a material adverse effect on the use and enjoyment of a very significant part of our property. So I'm happy to entertain any questions that you might have.
Do you want to talk first?
No, you go ahead.
Oh, so what's your proposal for, for, let's just take, start with the construction? Where would you like to see the construction staging, concrete washout, and? Yeah, all that stuff.
I normally see them out on the street, not?
Yeah, I don't know if you can do that on Alexander, but just, let's just say it was on the property, do you have a suggestion as to where it should be?
Well, further down the driveway, so that it's not impacting during the 16-month construction period during our, our use of the pool area, that would be one possible. I'm not an architect, I'm not in this business, I don't know, I haven't spent a whole lot of time studying these plans, but?
I'm just looking at it for you, just try to see if there is a solution that is a reasonable one from?
You know, and they, they also have a debris box there, too, so all of that stuff, I'd be great if that could be moved somewhere else, maybe on the, instead of putting it on the, the east side of the property, put it on the west side of the property.
Okay, and then your ideas as far as the massing goes, did you have a?
Well, it would, it would certainly would help, the massing is a problem, I appreciate the fact there's only one small window there, so that, maybe that window could be opaque as opposed to clear, and that would pretty much resolve privacy concerns, but it doesn't do anything with respect to the solar issue, which is a big deal in a pool area, that's where you go to a pool area to enjoy the warmth and the sunshine. And I, I would also say that, you know, the, the whole packet of the design review set doesn't even show the, our pool at 101 Pepper, I don't know that the architects even realized what, what they were doing, because there's, it's not shown on the, on the maps, and they, and it's also a minor irritation that our house and our garage is labeled as 300 Alexander, as well as in the?
360.
Yes, it's also referred to as 300 Alexander in the staff report. It, it just seems like everything has been pushed off to the, to our property line.
Okay.
I mean, so it, it is really a mixed blessing for us, and I would appreciate if we could have a little bit of flexibility, or have an opportunity to have, to have a real dialogue with, with the architects. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Riddle, I think we'll hear, do you have another comment? You, Mrs. Riddle?
Hi, I'm Marla S. Riddle, and we've lived there 30 years. When we're standing on the patio by our fence, it's a two-story, it looks like a tower looming down on us, and the angle is not parallel to the fence, it just is overpowering. And? like I said, I called Mr. Polsky. I said, can you come here? My suggestion, if you want to be five feet from the property line, remove a story above the garage, which would be fine, or move the whole thing over fifteen feet or so. So that's all.
Thank you very much for your comments. I I think we'll we'll hear all the comments and then we'll have Mr. Polsky. I might have you respond to the ones you can respond to. Great. Thank you.
Hi. My name is David Swengrose. I live at eight Loma Vista. We share one hundred and sixty three feet of property line. It is a southern exposure for me. I reviewed the plans closely. I'm fine with the height of the house where the house is existing. I have no problem with the FAR. I have no problem with the footprint. I have no problem with the pool up against the property line and the associated noise. I have no problem with all of the hardscape, which will generate extra noise from the kids, which I will like because I love kids, so that's going to be good. I have three accommodations that I would like. In the winter, between November and March especially, the sun comes low over the horizon. The yard does not get light or fully lit until about eleven AM. If they plant privates along that wall and privates grow twenty five to thirty feet tall, because I seen them right next door at the McGowan place, that would be a disaster for me. And so privates grow and they need to be maintained and not everybody maintains them. Sometimes they need some encouragement. So I would like a maintenance contract that said that they would not be higher than six feet on my property. So if that's six feet, that's plenty of privacy, little Lamanas, and I'm good with that. I sent this as a part of the commentary. A is my patio where I barbecue with my family. B is the kitchen nook. C, don't look ahead, no looking ahead. Just kidding, just kidding. C is the place where you prep food. D is the dining room. And E is the living room. If you look on the second page, that is a view from the kitchen nook. And that is the attic on the west side. If you look at the second page, what you see is that the attic is not, you know, there's no cathedral ceilings there. It's dead space. It is not a functional space. It is there to, you know, create an aesthetic for the house. I live in a house that's forty percent of its roofs are flat. And the architect at the time who actually built this nineteen thirty six house that I live in designed all the Bank of America buildings at the time in San Francisco managed to do it. Now, we all know that Jared Polsky is one of the best architects in Marin County and that if he can't do it, nobody can, and I'm sure he can make a flat roof. Now, I'm not requesting a flat roof for the entire building. If you look on the next page, what I'm requesting is just a flat roof on that particular area. When I look at these two spots, it's odd to me. It's almost as if the architect who designed it didn't notice that someone lived right in front of that attic or the Riddles on their side. I am absolutely certain, perhaps they need to go up a little bit in the middle, but they can design something that takes away five feet of dead space. And if they took away five feet of dead space, that would be great. I'm not asking for the, you know, the world here. I'm not asking for them to change their lifestyle. I'm just asking for to take down those two points that stick up right where we happen to live and would make a huge difference. Eight Loma Vista is a very unique house. If you've driven by and taken a look at it, there's not another house like it in Larkspur. In fact, there's not another house like it in Marin County. And I'll tell you, there's not a door in Marin County like this door right here. It is a piece of art. And to cover it up with a six foot fence is just ridiculous. It's upsetting because it's four feet thick, that door. Now, they put a jog in there because there's only thirty two inches from this door and the property line. So when the door opens up, it opens up literally with just a few inches to spare. Will you before you hit the fence? And so it's nice that they put a jog in there, but I guess they didn't want to hear the door banging against the fence. So there is an accommodation. I've had a pool. I understand pools. I understand how fences work around pools. I'm not asking to take, you know, the Lamana's property. They paid a lot of money for that property. That's their property. What I'm asking for is for their landscape architect to design something that works for them and that works for this door because it's worth looking at and it would be sad to cover it up. If they decide not to do that, then so be it. But I think it would be it would be sad to cover something up like this. I'm not asking for the world here. I think they're going to design a beautiful home. I think there's going to be kids next door, which are terrific. You know, I've met Tommy. He seems like a really nice guy, really thoughtful person, and it's going to be good. But, you know, just a few accommodations were going to be there. And I tell you, I think when Tommy's floating in his pool, having a margarita reflecting on life, he's not going to be thinking about that flat roof over on the corner. Thanks a lot.
I I should have a question before you sit down. Sorry. I actually did go do a site visit and my initial reaction was that the corner of the ADU was very close to the corner of your property.
Yeah.
And I did a little bit more research and asked, spoke with staff. Is that corner where this door is? Is that in? It looked to me that it wasn't maybe it looked to me that it was perhaps within the setback boundary on your property.
No, the the ADU is just a little bit off, but when you have a six foot door, it doesn't really matter where the ADU is because you're going to have, you know, I mean, excuse me, when you when you have a six foot tall fence right along the property line, it really doesn't matter where the ADU is because I'm not going to be able to see the ADU. So where they put the ADU is really irrelevant if you leave the fence up like that.
No, no, I guess the question was more referring to your property.
The property line runs right, you know, flat. If you, I don't know if you stood there, but you look at that little walkway, that walkway, actually, part of it runs on Lamana's property. And so maybe anywhere between six to twelve inches, it just curves out a little bit on their property.
But I guess my point is that it seemed to me and staff, if you can correct me if I'm wrong, that your property was jutting into the setback. So there wasn't the required setback that you need on your side.
On my side. On my side, my house is built in nineteen thirty six.
Right, right. And I'm not saying you can do anything about it, and I'm not saying it was your fault. And my guess is that you probably purchased it, but it seems to imply then that the property is closer to the applicant's property, partly due to the reason that your property is within the setback, that now the applicant has to comply with the same setback requirements that your property does not have to comply with because basically you were there first. And I just want to confirm that is correct.
Give you an idea.
Yeah.
That house is built in nineteen thirty six. It's on the Historic Registry of Larkspur. That means that I cannot change the windows. That means I cannot change the frontage. That means I cannot change the roof. That means that I cannot change most of the interior and the front half of the house. I got, you know, I can do things on the back of the house, but I can't. So there are enormous number of restrictions on that house. I have worked like crazy to get it back to where it needs to be. There used to be pool in the front yard. I've taken it out. I've rewired that entire house by myself because no electrician would do it.
Right, and it's a beautiful looking.
Well, I'm just saying, I'm just saying that it is that is really and it's just a nice house and you know what? It's historic house. So I don't really, you know, to say that, yes, it's the my property line is thirty six inches or thirty two inches from, you know, my house is thirty two inches from their property line is exactly right. But that's how they did it in those days.
Yeah, it was just a question. I'm just trying to clarify the distances because, like I said, when I first got to the property, it did seem incredibly close to your property and it is, it is close. But my understanding is part of the reason is your property is very close to your property line, which as if it was built today, it wouldn't be permitted.
Well, they would never build that house today.
That's true.
I mean, and they would never build that house today. It is, I mean, I mean, the woman down the street, you know, the woman down the street was eighty nine years old when she passed away and she said it was the best height and go to seek in, you know, Larkspur. You know, it's it's that type of house.
And and a second question I have for you is regarding the you you'd asked for a reduction in the the roof from a.
Just the, you know, the two winds that pop up to be pushed down. And they could they could pop up the middle a little bit. That's fine with me, you know, but I think, you know, waking up in the morning and having coffee with the Lamanas is not my idea of, you know, waking up. So, you know, I I, you know, you've got a living room, you know, you've got a dining room, you've got a kitchen and looking at that roof is going to be a big deal. I mean, having a fence that runs right along the property line is a big deal, but I know I can't do anything about that where they place the ADUs up to them.
And this, right, so my question to you on that is, and this may be directed eventually to the architect who I will ask to come back up and address some of these comments was is if instead of changing the the shape of the roof, if there's something can be addressed with the height of the top floor, whether that would perhaps solve the problem or?
The height of the top floor.
Yeah, the second story. I know we addressed the four the four plates on that. That would bring the height down.
Well, I, you know, I I guess I came with a very specific recommendation that could help alleviate the issue. If you have another possibility or another thought that could alleviate the issue, that would be terrific.
Okay, I'll leave that out there, but did anyone else have any questions? Jeff, no. Thank you very much.
Hi, Matt again, thirty eight Loma Vista, eight doors down from the applicant site. I only have one question, and that is, is there going to be a sidewalk built in front of the house? I noticed on the renderings what looked like a sidewalk, but I couldn't tell from the plans. So that's my question. I I hope the answer is yes, because I think a sidewalk is badly needed at the location. Right now, crossing Alexander from the existing sidewalk on the south side of Alexander to Loma Vista is is quite dangerous as cars come around that blind curve from the bridge. And so I think it would be much safer to have a crosswalk at the corner of Pepper and Alexander and then a sidewalk in front of the applicant's house just for that kind of that short block getting to Loma Vista. So the rendering showed it. I hope that means that it's in the plans, but I'm not sure if that was just an artifact of the rendering. So that's the question. Thank you.
Let me address that. Is there is there an easement, city easement on the front of that property? How big is the easement?
Right away.
There's a right away, right? So that's a public works question, really.
Yeah, and sometimes public works will condition a project to install a sidewalk. I don't see that in their conditions here. The applicant team, I don't know if they're planning on. Yeah, I haven't heard from public works. I don't know if they themselves are planning to install a sidewalk.
Yeah. Yeah, you know, the reason I ask is because it's not really in the purview of the planning commission to look at public works issues. So to answer your, I mean, just to save some time. But it's something that, you know, you could certainly petition public works to look at and see whether or not something like that would be. I mean, because it would be on the easement clearly, right?
Great, thank you very much. I actually had a question for staff. We got one more. I have a question on to staff based on the the comments we just heard, which is, is it even with, is it within our authority on the commission to require any kind of contract between two property owners? Is this something we can?
Like the vegetation.
Like the vegetation one. I mean, can, is that something that the commission can request or?
I think the city's position would be that that is a civil matter between two property owners. I I will say that you know, continuously planted hedges or whatnot technically do fall under the fence definition and have to meet the fence height requirements. So they would need to be kept to six feet tall. Otherwise, you could send a message to code enforcement and have them chop back down. At least did point out that that was a condition of approval that was added on to another project in the past, just specifying that any any continuously planted row of trees or hedges or whatnot comply with that height limit requirement that's established in the code.
So that is something that we could do here rather than require any kind of contract between two parties. Yeah. Put it as a condition of approval.
Yeah.
Right. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Holmes.
James Holmes, my primary concern is with the proposed removal of the non diseased trimmable heritage oak at the front of the house, but I'd just like to comment briefly, if I could, on a couple of the aspects of the historic evaluation. First of all, it says it's ninety five percent draft. I'm not sure what that means. Second, the study overlooks a distinct distinctive and unusual exterior feature, and that is the the narrow, the shingles which have alternating wide and narrow bands. And I I note this was feature was called out in Larkspur past and present with respect to one other one other house on West Baltimore, which I think is the only other house in Larkspur that I'm aware of that has this. But it was, as I say, cited in Larkspur past and present as a notable feature. The house does is a craftsman house that has all of the various features identified in Larkspur past and present. I mean, the the square pillared front porch, the bracket, the shingles, the bracketed end gables, the the white eaves and so on. The the porch is enclosed and there are some steel windows, but past evaluations have usually discounted those because kinds of changes because they are are removable. Third, the evaluation omitted to include the published obituaries of the last owner, Mr. Geralla, and the earlier owner, Harriet Lappin. And I know past evaluations have included those so that the commission itself can make a decision as to the significance of of the owners. And and finally, I think one can debate some of the conclusions about whether or not this qualifies as a local resource. There are there are five elements there and one of them is a number four, an example essential to maintaining the overall historic character of a larger area. And I think that that could be said with a very large, prominent craftsman house, largely unchanged craftsman house. And then architectural significance, there are six factors. Two of them are architectural design that is attributable to a historic period and a commonly identified architectural style or method of construction. I think that's met here because craftsman style and the number four is unusual use of construction materials, and I think that's met with the shingle. So I think the conclusions in the historical study are debatable at best, but turning to the non non-disease trimmable oak, heritage oak that is proposed. The staff report said that the trees are at the edge of the property, and specifically, all of those oak trees are in the front yard, and they are very prominent and conspicuous along Alexander Avenue, and they're an integral part of the street seen in the neighborhood, and I think they should be, be disturbed to the minimum extent consistent with professional arborist evaluation. The evaluation said that only one of the oak should be removed, and the rest should be treated, and one oak near the house should be trimmed. And so I think that removal of these would, I, I don't think the ordinance, the requirements of the ordinance are met here. It, one of the, one of the requirements, or one of the findings you would have to make is that it would adversely affect the health, safety or welfare of the area, and I think that the removal of a prominent screen of native oaks, precisely the kind of tree that we would like to preserve in Larkspur, would be detrimental to the general welfare. And it's important to note that the other ordinance findings that have to be made, a, one of them is that the condition of the tree poses a hazard with respect to disease danger of falling or proximity to existing or proposed structures, and the ordinance, the evaluation said that the tree could be trimmed. So proximity alone in and of itself is not a hazard, I mean, if that were the case, almost all the trees in the canyon would have to be removed. But it has to be a hazard, and there's no evidence that the evaluation found it to be a hazard. So in short, I think while one heritage oak was identified as being diseased and removable, I think all the others should be retained and treated and trimmed. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Holmes. So just a question then for the applicant, on the tree removal, maybe I misread this, but I thought it was just one tree in the front that was getting removed and two on the side, is that correct, or? Oh, two in the front and one in the side, so two, just two trees? And one on the side?
You're talking about trees one and two that are to be removed, right?
It's trees two and three, which are at the front, which is they kind of flank the proposed entry stairway, and then tree number six, which is the black locust between three hundred Alexander and one oh one Pepper.
So one, four and five stay?
And ten and eight stay as well.
Yes, they have, they have, those are the only heritage trees, those three that are getting removed.
Got it.
Okay, so, two and three.
So that stays, that stays, just that one goes.
If they go, there's not heritage trees.
That goes, that goes, that goes, okay. Thank you. Do we have any further public comment? Okay, in that case, I'm going to invite Mr. Polsky to come back up. If he could maybe address some of the comments he's heard tonight, I, I would say if he could specifically address the, the questions about the, the roofing, and the, maybe on the, the floor plates.
Right.
The landscaping, and then the, well, the landscaping for the, for the bushes and the trees. And it sounds like there's no sidewalk that's being, being requested.
That's usually a public works question, and they may ask us to do that, but so far we have not.
Okay.
I have just very few questions, first of all, for very comments. First of all, the CMP, the construction management plan, we're happy to work with the neighbors, and we don't have to put the debris box exactly there, we can move it around, there's no problem with that.
That's great. Would you mind speaking into the microphone?
Oh, okay, sorry. In terms of the height of the house, first of all, I, I don't think that a flat roof will be, will be a, a less, will lessen the impact to the neighbor at eight, eight Loma Vista. I think the sloping roof, a comp shingle roof sloping away from you, a dark roof is much less obtrusive than a flat roof that you're looking down upon. The, the plate height, I've already addressed, we really believe that the ten foot nine plate height is, ten foot six plate height, excuse me, is exactly what we, looks great. But, you know, if, if the committee felt that we had to lower it, you know, we would begrudgingly lower it. We can't lower the house, because it's just going to increase the, the cut and the off-haul. We can do one other thing, which we've studied, and frankly, we're not totally excited about it, but we have a five and twelve roof slope. We could change it to a four and twelve roof slope. Any less than that looks, looks funny. It doesn't look quite as nice from the, from the street or from off-site, but it, it does lower the, the ridge almost a foot, so we could do that. In terms of moving the whole house fifteen feet to the west, which the easterly neighbor wants, that, that would impact the, the neighbor at eight Loma Vista, and I just don't see that for this site. In terms of the window in the bathroom, could we use an opaque glass? We certainly could if that's required. So I, I don't really have more that I can add. We're trying to be good neighbors, it's, it's, it's a complicated site, and we, we think it's gonna be a good addition to the neighborhood. You have any other questions for me, I'm happy to take a chance at it.
Any questions from Mr. Polsky? No?
We're, whoa, how do I phrase this? If you were to reduce the plate, what would be the minimum plate height that you would, the absolute minimum that you take? As, as opposed to ten nine?
Yeah, yeah, okay, that's what I thought.
Oh, I, I actually had one other thing, sorry to get you while you're already away. In terms of the, we had a comment about the condensers and the noise, and I know that you had the, the noise study done, I was just curious if there had been any thought to moving that equipment a little farther from the property line, or?
It's really hard to cite that, we tried all sorts of places. I mean, we can try again, but that's, that seemed like the best place for the, and if it's, if it meets the decibel rating, that means it's not too, too loud, so.
Right, understood.
And it's, you know, it's got screening, and it's, it's made not to bother neighbors.
Thank you.
Yeah, but if you can keep your comments to three minutes, that would be great, thank you.
I mean, I, I think you're required to determine that there's no adverse solar effect as a result of the proposed construction. I think that's right in your municipal code. And I think there isn't, clearly, I see the shadow from the story pole flags right on my pool. So it seems like there should be some sort of a, some sort of a study done, or, but I think it's pretty obvious, you just have to walk over to my property in the, in the late afternoon, and you'll see the, see the shadows from, that will be there and will hide the sun in the, in the afternoon, so warm afternoons, people will be getting out of the pool an hour or two hours earlier than they normally would. No adverse effect on the three hundred Alexander pool. And then with respect to the decibel noise, it's thirty-eight decibels, so the legal limit is forty decibels. That's thirty-eight to thirty in my pool area, but no noise level with respect to the three hundred Alexander pool. It just seems very unfair that the new construction is advantaged to the detriment of the existing neighbor. And it just strikes me as being unreasonable. There should at least be some sort of study showing the solar effect of this, and I, and I think, I think a flat roof would go a long way on our, on the east side of the property, that is neighboring adjacent to our property, that would reduce the, the adverse solar effect. It would even be greater if they could bring the height of the bedroom down to ten feet as opposed to ten feet eight inches. Anyway, those are, I really would like to see a finding that there's no adverse solar effect on our property as a result of this proposal. Because I don't, I don't think you can make that finding.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Edel. Can I address a question to staff on this? It's gonna be on that. Can you, can you advise us on what is our compliance requirement with solar, any effect on sunshine to the neighboring property?
So, the finding says the proposed structure or addition avoids significant and unreasonable loss or interference with privacy, light and solar access, it's not no impact to solar access or privacy. So it's, if you feel that there, it, it, to me, the finding says that it's expected that there may be some impact for any new proposed structure. It's really the commission's decision if it can.
It's unreasonable. Right, instead of aesthetically.
Right. Right, understood, and we, we understand your concern here, and, and we're trying to address the, we're trying to address it, so. Okay, so it's a, what was, sorry, can you repeat that?
That particular sentence is, "The proposed structure or addition avoids significant and unreasonable loss or interference with privacy, light, solar access and prominent scenic views."
Okay, great, thank you very much. Any questions on that to staff?
I, I guess I got a question for the applicant team. Has any thought, I know on some projects that come before our desk, we see like a shade study, I was just wondering if any thought had been, if, if that was possible, it sounds like that's a concern here, so I was just. Okay.
Okay. Yeah, okay, further public comment? At this point, if you could just limit your comments to three minutes, that would be great.
Super, super fast.
Yeah, thanks.
Hi, I'm Stephanie Coglan, I live on the corner of Baltimore and Taylor, so very close. I'm also very close friends, but that doesn't stop why I'm significantly interested. We are very blessed to have moved here a year ago to the area, and we are very much part of a community now, and I have been following what Shannon and Tommy have been doing, and I know that they have taken a lot of time and effort into the plans to not significantly impact the neighborhood, and we've been in discussion with all my neighbors about the impact of the property and what that will be. I personally think the house will look beautiful and gracious, but I don't think anyone is denying that. And I think that the point that they have gone to a lot of effort is, is to not make an unreasonable impact on anybody within the direct neighborhood. There is always gonna have to be some sort of a compromise that happens, and if obviously my impact is less when I'm around the corner than those directly behind, but I know that they've gone to a lot of effort with all of the plans to not significantly impact anyone with the design, and I think that they have made a really good effort with that, and I think the house will be beautiful. And I hope that everyone considers that there will be some impact whenever there's a new property built. And we very much support this and look forward to seeing the house in the future. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any further public comment? Okay. Thank you, and just a reminder to keep your comments, thank you.
The Lomanas are gonna have a beautiful house, we're not asking for much. We're just asking for a roof that's not being used functionally to come down a little bit, that's it.
Right, thank you. All right, I'm gonna bring it back to the commission for discussion. Now, Commissioner Campbell, if you would like to start.
Yeah.
You ready?
Sure. So I think, I'm just gonna go through the, the requests, I guess, that are in the staff report. So, the floor area ratio exception, I, I think that that's reasonable for the neighborhood, it seems like that's in line with, with everything, so I don't have a problem with that one. The slope use permit, I appreciate that the house is gonna be, you know, into the hillside as opposed to perched on top. And if that requires some off-haul and grading, then I think I can make the findings for that, too. And the heritage tree removal, I, I, I guess I agree with Mr. Holmes's comment that I'd like to see that, that, I think it's tree three just trimmed, I mean, if we could move the walkway over a little bit, but at the same time, I, I don't think that it's a, I don't think that that's a deal breaker for, for me, I think I can make the findings that, you know, architecturally, the, that tree is, is you know, in the proximity. So I think it comes down to, to the design review and sort of negotiating our way around the design with, with respect to, to the neighbors. So I guess first I want to say that we, we see our fair share of neighbor disputes here, and there are always going to be impacts to neighbors when new construction is, is built and designed, and that's just a a fa, a function of, you know, people who are, are there first, have the advantage of, of being there as opposed to this house, which is, which is getting built, and I guess doesn't enjoy the same privileges of existing. So I, there are some concessions that I think the architect has proposed tonight, which I, which I like, opaque glass on the east elevation, or some extra privacy, that seems like a great idea. Lowering the plate height seems like it would be good as well. If you guys are, are, you know, it sounds like that, sounds like everybody is, is in favor of that, or at least open to it. And then I guess I'd be curious to hear what the rest of my commissioners have to say, but it seems like a shade study might be helpful here. Just to sort of get a handle on what the impacts to the neighbors really are, because it can be difficult to tell with just story poles. In terms of the, some of the other comments that we've heard tonight, the condensers and the noise, you know, we have limits for, for a reason, and I understand that there will be noise, but you know, we've, we've sort of set and agreed on those limits before this project came forward, and so it seems reasonable to abide by those. And then in terms of the fence along the property line, it seems, it seems generous to me that, that that they've, that the property, the applicants have provided a jog in the fence. It's, it's not the applicant's fault, I guess, that the neighbor's property is, is close to the property line. It's unfortunate for everybody involved, but I appreciate that they've, you know, it seems like they've made some concessions. Yeah, I guess I'll see, see what the rest of my commissioners have to say.
Thank you. You want me to go to tomorrow, Commissioner Hall? Oh, you can talk all you want, Jack.
So, I know that the family at eight Loma Vista, I can't pronounce your last name correctly, was concerned about the fence being built on that property line, and, you know, maybe having it be replaced with plants, but I believe that there is a requirement that if you have a pool, it has to be fenced. And is that part of why this fence is, is all along the property line, Alex?
Yeah, the building code does require that pools have to be fenced, and there can only be an opening of so big in the fence, thinking of chain link.
So I, I do think that, you know, the applicants, you know, offering to put the little jog in there, and I guess at the same time also move the ADU down is, seems very generous to me, considering that the house next door is not their fault that it's so close to the property line. I am curious about the condensers, if there's some way to minimize the sound, you know, I don't know if you can put a housing over them or something like that?
So they are proposed to be screened, I think it's a wood enclosure, yeah. So they have, they are proposing.
So the DB level then is based on it not being screened?
No, the, the DB level in the, the sound study is based on it being screened. I'll just, for reference, I think the average conversation is around sixty decibels, that's the point of reference, is what I've heard at least, so.
Understandable. I mean, I think, I think it's a lovely design, I don't fully understand the, the flat roof, how, how that benefits. How, how that benefits the neighbors by reducing how it's gonna like create less shade, I guess, or is that what, oh, okay, on the east side. And, and I have to look at my neighbor roof, so I don't know. But, you know, I, I'm guessing that that's not, I didn't walk the property. I looked at it from the street because I didn't want to be accused of trespassing. But, you know, it seemed like the, the existing building seems fairly high, and I, I realized that the, the story poles are taller. But I just don't understand the, the, and maybe Mr. Polsky can explain it, like, the idea of flattening the roof. Does that really gain that much? And, and I know that there were a couple of comments that the attic is not really being a used space, but I would imagine it is going to be a used space. Maybe it's not a living space, but, you know. It's five feet tall. I used to hide out in my attic as a kid. It wasn't very tall. So, I don't know, that would be my one question, I guess, for Mr. Polsky, is, is thinking about the, the flat roof adjustment. It doesn't make sense to me that it would make that big of a difference in the shade issue. No, yes? Yeah. The floor plate, it didn't sound like floor plate was something that they really wanted to do.
I don't think they want to do that.
Yeah, I don't think they do either, yeah. So.
So, so do you have a question for Mr. Polsky or?
I was just trying to understand the, you know, does it, have you looked at the design doing the flat roof or the four plate? Does that really make an impact in the the, the shade that's gonna be created or?
Frank, they haven't done the shade study. But the, the sloping roof is just an aesthetic, most houses, well, some houses have flat roofs, but most houses in this area have sloping roofs. In fact, I would guess 90% of the houses have sloping roofs. And it's not so much that they're using their attic. In this case, we actually are using our attic. We're putting our HVAC equipment and ducts in the attic to serve the top floor. But, you know, the, I think aesthetically, it would be very strange to have a house of this style with a flat roof.
Okay. I have no more comments.
No more comments, okay.
Commissioner Swisher.
Right. So, I think this is a beautiful design. It's elegant, and it's certainly gonna be a lot better than what's existing there now. And as far as, I didn't really understand Mr. Holmes' point about the historic nature, other than just as historical commentary. I, I think, you know, you proposing not building it and redoing that house, that's, I don't think that's on the table. There are lots of houses, by the way, mine included, that has that skipped shingling on the second floor, so it's, there's not just two houses, there's plenty in Larkspur that have that. So it issued from a design standpoint versus making the neighbors happy. I have a really hard time being sympathetic for somebody saying that their pool is shaded a little bit. I can understand if your house is shaded. But to say that, you know, because I can't enjoy my pool 100% of the time, and I therefore want to make material changes to a giant project because of that, I don't really have a lot of sympathy for that. I'm sorry, sir. I mean, I think, though, that being said, I think a shade study would be valuable to actually scientifically look at it and seeing if there is a significant impact from a shade standpoint, like if your entire pool was shaded for the entire year, yeah, that could be an issue. But the main issue, I think, is the question of plate height and roof slope. Right now, it's a five and 12. And I think that lends a very elegant look to the house. I think a four and 12 would look subtly less elegant and a little different. I don't think, however, that a plate height of 10, not, 10 versus 10,9. I would be really curious to see what renderings would look like as a 10-foot plate height. It might be that it's out of proportion from what we were trying to get to at the house, because it looks like you have about a 50/50 proportion as it currently is between the first and the second floor. Whereas if you dropped your plate height to 10, it might make the house look a little stubby. But I don't know, I'm not an architect, I'm an anesthesiologist, so really, what do I know about that? So I think, again, as far as, let's go back down the findings, I have no problem with the slope, with the variance, it's, that's minimal. And the, the, for the FAR, and that's fine. I do think the next, and I agree with my other commissioners, that the other aspects of the variance, or the other requests. As far as the trees go, I, I take it, take it tree by tree, look and see whether or not those other trees can be treated. Looking at the pictures of them, and I know that property quite well, I walk by it all the time. Some of those trees are looking pretty ragged there. And the ones that are, are want to be taken out. I love trees, and I, you know, one of my favorite books was Should Trees Have Standing? And I think that they do have standing, and I think we should try to do as much as we can to preserve trees. But disease, there's a lot of disease in some of these trees, and aesthetically, some of them are not you know, as nice as others, but as best as possible, I think we should try to preserve the trees that we can preserve. With the other issue was moving the construction equipment and the box. I think, try to come up with something, because I think that's a reasonable request, to try to move things to minimize impact on the neighbors. We've had recently a very big project on, on Ardmore, where my, my house is. And I think it's had a really material impact on the neighbors, and it's been going for two years. But they did as much as they could to try to mitigate that, and I think you should be able to do that, too. I like the fact that you're willing to move the ADU. I think moving it five feet is a good idea, and it would actually be visually interesting, too. From a design standpoint, moving it down south into the west as well. So I could make the findings for this. I personally think it is nice as it is. But I think maybe a shade structure and then a rendering at a 10-foot plate height, and then we could see that first before we approve it. That would be my, my preference.
Thank you. So my comments here. I wanted to start by saying I think it's a very beautiful design, to be expected from Mr. Polsky, Polsky. And I think it's gonna be a marvelous property. It really does look wonderful. And I'm really pleased to see the applicants take on what actually is an eyesore. So it's great that you're doing this and you're going to improve the site, so that's great. I also want to address the neighbors' comments. I'm hoping you see that the commission does take it seriously, and we, we have read all your comments. We've tried to address them one by one, so we do hear what you're saying, and we're, we do take it very seriously. And I was also really pleased to see a lot of comments in favor of the project as well. But right now, what we're trying to tackle is, is the two immediate neighbors and how that works with the requirements in the city code. I, I don't want to have to repeat everything my fellow commissioners have said. I think it seems clear that there's going to be some issues that you're going to deal with, like the moving the condensers, if you can. Or the location of some of the materials that, and you're gonna move the ADU. You're gonna put an opaque window in. I think when you, it sounds like you'll be coming back to us, so when you come back to us, perhaps you could bring us more information about the, the boundary bushes. And I think we can eventually put in a condition of approval that will require a height limit on that. I, I don't, it sounds like we're not gonna have to deal with any kind of contract here between the, the two neighbors. It will be part of what's approved for the property. The big issue here is the, the roof. I, I'd kind of like to say that the goal of the commission here is to ensure that, that we have an appropriate design for the city, not just for the immediate neighbors. And in the light of that, I hate to change what is already a very beautiful design to kind of force a flat roof on this. It, it really will change it to a detriment. So I, I don't think that necessarily works just to solve one or potentially two neighbors' complaints. I think it sounds like we can work with lowering the plate height to 10 by six inches. I think that's what we're talking about here. Is it nine inches? Nine inches, okay.
It was six inches. I thought it was 10, nine.
Let's have a look, I mean, that.
It, it is 10, six, to confirm.
Yeah, I thought it was six inches, yeah. Okay, so it's six inches or, it sounds like we can work with that. And if we can see the, the dry, the Commissioner Swisher made a good point, maybe that would look odd, so I think it would be helpful to see what, what that looks like. And then the I guess the shade study. I don't know, I'm, I'm in two minds about that. I mean, from, from a personal point of view, if I had shade on a pool, I would prefer that. I mean, rather than, but I can see you nodding, you know, not agreeing with that. You clearly want your sunshine. It may be worth, I mean, since you're coming back anyway, it may be worth doing this shade structure, so you can have this answered once and for all, and it will solve a, a, a question mark between you and your neighbor that will always be out there. So I, I can go either way on that. I mean, may, maybe it's a good idea, don't really say do that.
I don't know how much it costs to do a shade.
Yeah, is that an expensive thing? No? And can, can that's something that can be done by the, the next time they come back? It can, okay.
Then, yeah, I think it's a good idea. I, I mean, even just from a neighbor relation standpoint, right, like?
But in terms of everything else, I mean, I, I, so really, we're just looking at design review, so. I, I actually, I personally didn't have an issue with that. When I went by, it did kind of look messy, and it, I, I saw, I could see why you wanted to remove those trees. I don't know, plant another tree somewhere else on the property, maybe. Maybe we could solve it that way. And I would add one more thing, in, in honor of Daniel Cuntzler, who always used to raise this in every meeting. Are you thinking of putting solar panels on your roof? You are? Okay, good, okay. So I think we can, I think we have enough here then to make a motion, right?
I mean, do, do you feel like you have, I mean, I feel like we've covered what, what we're looking for in, in terms of
That's a great question.
Meeting, is that?
Do you have enough guidance? Okay, and I think we've really narrowed down what needs to happen here, so we hopefully can just resolve all those by next meeting, so.
So do we need to, I don't think we need to make a motion.
Do we need to, so I'm gonna look for staff for guidance.
Continue it to a date certain.
Yeah, with, with the, with the discussions that we've had.
Yeah, yeah, to provide, based on your feedback.
I'll make that motion. So I make a
Wait, and do we need the detailed feedback or no? You've got all that in the, in the minute.
I've got all that. It sounds like they've got all of that. If you want to specifically enumerate what you're looking for, you can, but I think we're all on kind of the same page here.
Yeah, I'd rather leave it, you know, open to, I mean, we're dealing with extraordinarily competent and very skilled architects.
Yeah.
So I think they can figure out what the amateurs up here have to say about that.
And then I will defer to you if, if it makes sense on art to meet with your neighbor on the east side. I, I don't know if that helps or not, but he, he was seen particularly, well, the, the lady, Mrs. Riddle seemed particularly upset by that, but.
Oh, well.
Okay. Motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion that we continue it to the next meeting with the understanding that the issues we discussed, namely a rendering with a six-inch decreased plate height. A, a draft of a, of a, of a schematic that, that shows that. I, I don't agree with making any of this roof flat, so I'm not going to include that in the motion. And also showing the rendering with the ADU in the position that you would want to see it in. I, I agree with Natasha about the trees. I think that I, I would go with the Arbus report, and I don't have a problem with removing those trees. So I, I
And the shade.
And the shade, and plus a shade study.
And maybe more details on whatever landscaping is on the bushes that can just be provided to the neighbor or put in the plans, yeah.
And that's a meeting of May 14th, 2024?
Yeah.
Oh. Which I'm not gonna be here.
Yeah.
Okay.
Can, can you make some reasonable motion out of that, what I just said?
That's fine. Whatever, a second would be fine.
Okay. I'll second.
You can second it. Right, and Commissioner Swisher?
Hi.
Commissioner Campbell?
Yes.
Commissioner Hall? Commissioner Chalmers?
Yes.
And Mr. Wagstaff's absent tonight, so the motion carries to continue it to May 14th.
Thank you.
And we can give you copies of the obituaries, because we do have them in our file that Mr. Holmes mentioned. You could look at those, too.
Oh, okay. We'll read those. All right, thank you. So moving on. Oh, ADU. So can we jump straight to the fence height exception? Right, since you're leaving? Can we, I'm just gonna jump straight to C. I think for B, maybe we had, I think Rockwagstaff had comments on this. He had something he wanted to raise, and he's not here tonight. So I think where I, I spoke to Elise about maybe continuing this to May 20, 28. The ADU. Not here, May 14th. I don't know, I have to, I may have to switch that.
So you, do you want to start with the fence height and come back to Elise's, or just continue that?
Continue B and then go straight to C.
And you talked, there's no time constraints on that.
She said we just have, yeah.
Okay.
And we would need a motion in a second for continuing the item.
Can you do that?
I'll, I'll move to continue item B to the May 28th meeting.
Second, okay, great. And then
Oh, would you like a roll call vote?
Oh, yes, we'll do that.
Commissioner Swisher. Commissioner Campbell?
Yes.
Commissioner Hall? And Chair Chalmers?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you. And then item C, to discuss the fence height exception process to allow zoning administrator approval with notice, but no public hearing. I'll pass it over to Jackie.
Good evening, commissioners. So this is related to the topic that we brought up several, I think it's two meetings ago about modifying the fence height exception permit process. I don't have much to add outside of what's in the staff report. I think it's pretty straightforward process. Basically, right now, when someone applies for a fence height exception permit, they're required to pay a $4,009 fee. It requires a public hearing with a 10-day notice, so those hearings are held here in the chambers before the zoning administrator. Basically, staff feels that this puts an undue burden on the applicant and on staff. It requires a lot of staff time to hold a public hearing, to write the staff report, to put all of that into the process. And a, a lot of times, what happens is people do come with fences that they've already discussed with their neighbors. The neighbors are in agreement. They're typically pretty straightforward and don't have a lot of hiccups. We are able to generally address any matters about design in the preliminary process, because people come to us and want to discuss these fences first. So if someone comes with a fence that we're just like, whoa. You know, you want to put a six-foot fence on your front property line that's got vertical slats, like there's, we'll let people know there's just no way we would be able to support that upfront, and people will make modifications. So by the time they come forward with an application, typically, we've got a design that we know we can support. Another place where this creates what I would think is an undue burden is when we have fences that are coming in for after-the-fact permits. So the code requires that we charge double the application fee when someone is, as a penalty, when someone comes in for one of these, any permit after the fact. So that means that someone who has a fence needs after-the-fact fence height exception permit, even when we can support it and we're in full support, the fee would be in excess of $8,000. And recently, I've seen people just say, I, I just can't afford that. I'll just cut down my fence. Even, even fences that Um, even, even fences that we would be able to support, you know, this. So then you have a, uh, materials that are being wasted. People are like really troubled by it. Um, and as you know, there, or, well, I think we've discussed this in previous meetings. I have been taking on a lot of, um, existing fence height, um, matters throughout the city. There's, um, within the Larkspur Marina, a lot of fences that have been built. We saw a lot of fences, what we've been able to determine is a lot of fences were built in between twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one, when people were doing a lot of improvements to their homes. And because of COVID, our offices were closed or had modified hours and people were doing work on their homes and maybe not going through all of the right processes. So we've got a lot of fences that are, we're trying to sort out and get people to bring their fences into compliance, either through a fence height exception permit and after the fact fence height exception permit, or um, if it's one that we cannot support, requiring them to either move it back or cut it down or make some kind of design concession. So what I would like this evening is for you all to discuss that matter. Um, we would like to see this be handled in a similar manner as a minor exception permit. So a minor exception is typically processed for a non-conforming, uh, structure. Largely, the process would stay the same, but it would not require a public hearing. Um, if staff could not support the application, then it would immediately be required to go to the planning commission. Um, likewise, if a protest was received, then the applicant would need to bring it to the planning commission. Um, and the, my belief here and our belief is that this will actually encourage people to, I would say, like, do it, do it right from the get-go, really get your neighbors on board, make sure that you're coming in with a proposal because the fee difference and the time difference for the applicant is so great, it is worth it. If someone could say, wow, I can, I can do this the right way for a, a, a fee, but a nominal fee versus just trying to bolt, maybe bolt, be bullheaded about it and go to the planning commission and pay a, a greater fee and knowing that your neighbors don't like it and staff doesn't like it, would likely be denied at that point. And we've provided, uh, the redlined version of the code section. So the code section's eighteen point sixteen point zero nine zero. So these are the height limits. This is in the regulations for all districts. Um, and this would modify that code section to, um, include a new public notice and action, um, a public hearing and insert the appeal, the appeal period, the revocation and the expiration of that. Uh, the findings would remain the same. And I'm available if you have any questions about that.
Thank you, Jackie. I was like, you have a question?
I do have a question. Um, I mean, it seems, seems pretty reasonable streamlining, uh, the process, so I like it. Um, I just had a question of if, and maybe I just missed it in here, but if the zoning administrator approves something, so we send out notices and don't receive any protests and the zoning administrator approves it, is there a for minor permits or for this proposed amendment? Was there, is there a way to, to, um, appeal that for the public?
Yes, uh, so any decision that's made by the zoning administrator or anybody here is appealable um, and is subject to that ten day appeal period.
Okay.
Um, and that would be included in the language in the notice that's sent out. So the, the notice that would be sent would say, the zoning administrator intends to approve this project. If a protest is not received by this date, then the permit will be issued. This, that decision would be appealable up until a specific date. So that, the initial notice would include all of that language.
So we're really giving like a window and then another win, I mean, okay.
Yeah. Yeah, I also think it's a good idea just to do it administratively. My only concern was, and it's really sparks because it's really our neighborhood. It's had a lot of the problems with the fences going up. And a lot of them have just been these, um, kind of six foot fences in the front of the property, which is changing the design. And I know a lot of neighbors are complaining about this. And I have, I believe neighbors have come to the, to the planning department with complaints.
Yes, I've been working closely actually with, um, with your HOA about this. My understanding is that the HOA is in the process of trying to update their CCNRs to be in alignment with the code requirements. Um, and once that is done, what we've been working towards is, um, trying to get a, kind of like a group fence height exception permit for all of the fences that we can approve and for those that we cannot, then they would have, have the choice to either come before the planning commission um, or modify their fence as needed to be compliant.
Okay.
So that is something that is in the process and something that's in, in the works.
Right.
Yeah, we're definitely aware of it.
So we can talk about that offline. That's not in my position as a chair of the commission. I'm just, and I'm sort of curious to know where that's, where that's.
Yeah.
Where that is right now.
A bit in a holding pattern right now, like many, many fences are, um, are in a bit of a holding pattern, especially because we're having these conversations. So with the fences, matter of fences, I have actually been letting people know that because we're having conversations about modify, potentially modifying the process. I haven't wanted to have anyone pay an eight thousand dollar penalty.
No, that makes sense. I, I guess my only thought was, based on what I've seen happen over the last few years, that there seems to be some element of subjectiveness as to what one thinks is a, see, it says here significantly kind of obstructive fence and what one and there it, so I just was trying to avoid more fences just unilaterally going up around the city where if you look at certain neighborhoods like Hillview and, um, Creekside, our neighborhood, it, it is very open. And if people suddenly thought, oh, that's great, I can now, this is just going to allow me to just put a fence up and enclose my front yard. It would just seem a real shame if people use this as an avenue to sort of do that. It's like, oh, it's really cheap now for me to come in as opposed to a deterrent from what is right now a very kind of open neighborhood feel that we see in a lot of these kind of tract developments that we have. It's not necessarily the same up in the hills. I feel like in the hills, it's a, it's a different story. A lot of the, there are more it's exactly, they're keeping wild animals out, where we don't see that as much on the flats.
It also has to do with how opaque the fences are. I mean, when they tend to be open, you know, wire fences with four inch grid, uh, again, that's deer fencing. People don't care about that so much. But when they are, you know, like monolithic type fences, that's where people get kind of bent out of shape as they should, right? Especially in, you know, downtown suburban areas. You don't want a house looking like a fortress.
Yeah, I, I agree. And, and, uh, all of us are in agreement there. It is with, it would then single family design guidelines and the general plan to maintain the openness of the street scene. So that is something we would definitely be taking into consideration when, uh, making that finding.
Okay, I just wanted to, and then I, I had, so I think in general, unless my fellow commissioners had any objections, I think. No. I'm, I'm for this. I think this is great. I had, I can't help myself tweets to the language. I had suggested that I, I mean, I can talk through it now. If you guys want to sit and listen, no. Or what I can do is, I can just email. I don't think anything that's, that you're going to have any, I don't think there's going to be any objections from anyone, but you could still bring it back to the next meeting and see if there's any issues. It's really just reordering some of the language and, um, for example, I mean, and, and really the only kind of main change would be just removing some of the unnecessary language, like, you know, if the fence, like an A, three, a three, actually, you've changed it to one, three point, no, three A, the fence height will not create hazards by impairing the view of pedestrians or traffic as seen by motorists. I don't know if you really need to say what the motorists are actually doing, that they're coming in and out of the property. It just seems to make it, it's, it's a fairly simple thing. It shouldn't, if you put a fence up, it shouldn't create hazard and it shouldn't block views by people driving and people walking, right? So it was things like that, unless you tell me there's a reason that additional language is in there.
Um, you know, this language is just from the existing findings, so we're, we're able to tweak them now, now is the time. Um, my understanding is that that first finding is related to the, um, try the clear sight triangle, thank you.
Right, so it doesn't, yeah.
So and that, and that is, I mean, the clear sight triangle is related to motorists entering and exiting the property because that is about people who are, you know, we want to make sure when someone's reversing or I, I understand your point.
Who else would it be other than people coming in and out of the house? Neighboring properties and adjacent streets. I mean, I wasn't really sure. It's sort of covered everything, really.
Yeah, I don't.
I don't know. Again, it's just me being a lawyer. And then I, the, actually, the one question I did have was, um, commission's action will not be final until the appeal period has la, lapsed. Like, again, it just, it seems that's obvious, right? I mean, that's it, it didn't, it just seemed like unnecessary language in there.
Sure, I, it is a zoning code though, and sometimes we need to just be really, you know, black and white.
It's in the zoning code?
It's, it's just, this is part of the zoning code. So this is just being really black and white about things that there's an appeal period and the decision's not final until after that.
You just want to be crystal clear.
Just crystal clear.
State it twice, okay, all right, okay. So if it's okay with. Nah, that's, yeah, maybe. So what I'll do is I'll, if it's okay with my fellow commissioners, I will just, I'll send you um, just a markup.
Yeah.
It's not that many changes.
I think that's wonderful. Please do. And then I can discuss that with, um, Elise and when we come back with the final read for the recommendation to the city council, we can make sure that everything's been tweaked.
And you can just sign off on the language at that point rather than the concept of whether or not we do this.
Kit, should we open this up for public comment?
We have one person in the row. Nope. No. So no public comment, um. Do we need to make a motion or we just, uh, we just, we just move on?
Okay.
Great, thank you. Thank you so much, Jackie, and thank you for raising this.
And, and a, and a good idea, I guess, right? Like credit where credits do, pointing out a problem or an inefficiency and, you know, helping to fix it, right? That's.
And it'll make your job a lot easier, I think.
Everybody appreciates it, so.
So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Um, okay, so moving on to the business items, um, we need to approve the minutes for March twenty-six, twenty twenty-four.
I make a motion that we approve the minutes of March twenty-six, twenty twenty-four of the planning commission.
Uh, roll call?
Uh, Commissioner Swisher?
Hi.
Commissioner Campbell?
Yes.
Commissioner Hall? Commissioner Chalmers?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
Um, do we have any planning commissioners' reports?
I have an announcement. So quick thing. Well, one, one is I wanted to, um, welcome Stephanie Andre. She's our new councilwoman. And, um, she's the liaison for the planning commission because, um, unfortunately Kevin Carroll passed away, so, um, she has been appointed to that position. Um, and so thank you for attending and.
Thank you very much.
For the whole meeting?
Yes.
Oh, good.
And then I. I have a question. Are you, are you now a council member for the next four years or you're just a council member until the next election?
Council member of Kevin Carroll's role, so it expires December twenty twenty-six.
I see. Okay. But, okay, are there people coming up for reelection and?
Yes. So there's three seats up, uh, for the election in November. So Kate Paulson's seat, Scott Pendell's seat and Kevin Carroll's seat. Kevin Carroll, who was away a couple of weeks ago, so his seat is vacant. So there'll be three council member seats up for, um, election or reelection this.
Wait, but I thought you were Kevin Carroll's seat.
Kevin Harrow.
Harrow.
Oh, sorry, the one who moved to Nevada. Yes, I'm sorry, okay.
So we discussed Kevin Carroll's seat last Wednesday and council decided to, um, not make an appointment or a special appointment because uh, the rules, calculating state law says you can't have more than a majority of council be appointed.
Right.
And so that would be the third, if we had appointed, that would be the third seat that would have been appointed.
I see.
Three out of five seats and so it potentially opened us up to litigation. I don't, I don't know if anybody would have.
Right, so.
And so we decided that would be good. Um, you know, we thought that citizens of Larkspur should be able to vote on their next representative and so we decided to hold us, uh, an election in November when the other two seats are out.
Got it, okay. Thank you, thank you very much. And thank you.
And then, um, we've posted a new draft of the housing element online and we're supposed to have it up for seven days prior to sending it off to the state for their review to see if it, um, meets their review standards. So it's online right now. People are welcome to comment on it, but we will have more um, a public hearing on it if, if it passes the state review. Um, and I, I will probably wait, we, we might have a workshop on the sites just to discuss them more, but I'm a little hesitant because I just want to make sure that the state's going to accept them before, um, we open the can of worms again about the sites. So if, if it's acceptable to them, then we would try to schedule a hearing right away to, to talk about them.
I, I had a question on that. If I read that correctly, does that mean that the Mount Tam Racket Club site is now out of the housing element and the site?
On a list, but we aren't proposing to change the zoning. So it's, it's currently zoned for twenty-one units of housing an acre and it would just stay like that. There'd be no special, um, designation for it or any sort of incentives for it to develop and it should, it meets all the requirements for a site that could be available for affordable housing as it is, just because it's a large site and has twenty-one units an acre. So the plan was just to keep it on there, but not make any changes to put even additional floor, uh, units, because it allows, it currently allows seventy-nine units with the current zoning, so, which is adequate for an affordable housing project if someone wanted to build one there.
So the current zoning without any changes allows for how many units?
Seventy-nine.
Seventy-nine?
Right.
Okay. And, um, and then you added in three additional sites on Magnolia?
Three additional sites on Meg, or there's two, two sites on Sir Francis Drake, um, actually three. So one hundred Drake's Landing Road with Community Center is, that was added, um, for potential for fifty units of affordable housing with the idea that they might convert part of the parking area for housing, not necessarily converting the structure because it's pretty fully occupied. And then two, there's two vacant office buildings on Sir Francis Drake at five oh five and five eleven, and those were added with just a little bit higher density, um, and then also the option of maybe doing a hundred percent housing rather than having to build housing over commercial. And then, um, on Magnolia Avenue, there was property owner interest from the owner or I guess what, it's one of a group of owners of nine eighty and nine ninety Magnolia Avenue, which is currently a tutoring center and there's also an office there. And then a couple of vacancies or I think there's a personal service business, but it's sort of the first business on the right, um, after you pass the Hillview neighborhood. And so that, we've added that for housing and also allowed it to be a hundred percent residential that they wouldn't have to necessarily build something tall above commercial. But that's all up for discussion. And then the Balloon Delights store is up for sale and so that unit, that, that site was added too, with just slightly higher housing, but with also the option of possibly converting the Balloon Delights store to housing without it being above commercial again to kind of reduce the height of the construction.
I see.
Um, I know there was a lot of concern downtown about retaining businesses, so we might get the same comments for those sites, but they're all fairly, one of them is really close to residential neighborhood. Balloon Delights is just a small, it's kind of a small sliver of a site, so I'm not sure people will be as concerned, but those are the new, those are the only new sites.
One across the street, wasn't it? Near, near Ace Hardware, was it, was it eight hundred also on the?
Did they, um, did they, they sell those entitlements to, to, to the developer for that site?
Oh, North Magnolia.
So they're still talking about coming in for. So they're still talking about coming in for building permit right now. So I don't think they've sold it. They're just proceeding with constructing the project for the Magnolia Village.
No.
It was on the market, but I, I think they're just planning to build it. Yeah, it's, they're, it's, they seem to be pretty seriously pursuing a building permit application.
Okay, and then what, and what did you, and it was another one added in. I saw eight ninety, eight hundred or eight ninety Magnolia?
They're the same site, eight ninety and nine, it's, well, they're directly across the street from, um, M and G's Burger essentially. And it's just, there's one building in front, one in the back.
Oh, I see. And that's housing, okay.
Or that would potentially, either the buildings could be converted. They were built in the seventies and so they're pretty old. So someone might want to redevelop the site and it sounded like there might be some property owner interest in selling at some point. So they wanted, they thought it would, as it would be a benefit to the property to have it in the housing.
Got it, okay. Um, great. And then any updates on anything, any of the owners that have come in? There was a, the guys, remember there was a gentleman here that came after the big meeting that, did he ever follow up with you for the King of the Roll site, Olvan, that?
Uh, yeah, that property. Um, I haven't spoken with that particular, uh, owner about it. I've had brief conversations with somebody who I think is trying to work with the owner to bring something forward. Um, but I haven't heard anything in a few months.
Okay.
And, and that one is also just retaining its existing zoning at 21 units an acre, which allows for 30 units at the site. The Larkspur, central Larkspur specific plan limits that site to 19 units, which I'm not sure is, um, something we could do legally. So the base zoning for that site is 30 units. And then if they were to provide some affordable housing, that number can go up if they wanted more units too.
Hmm, okay.
Or if they worked for the city and had a plan that came in with the city lot or something like that too, they could get some more density if they were, um, somehow working with the city and replacing the city parking lot.
Great, thank you. Any questions?
On a different project, um, the 189 Sir Francis Drake. Bank of Marine wants to move over. So wasn't, was that site in housing element?
That one was removed. So 189 was where Soth, it's like Sotheby's Real Estate, it used to be Zim's, like if anyone remembers Zim's.
I remember Zim's.
That one was in, there was concerns expressed by neighbors across the street about the potential for four story buildings there. Um, but we know that Bank of Marine has applied for a conditional use permit that's going to be heard fairly soon. So we took it off because we know they don't intend to actually build housing there during the housing period.
Got it, okay.
What kind of, the, 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 the parking structure that that gentleman brought up, is it, is that something that's going to come for the planning commission?
You know, I, um, I'm, we're still looking at that because I don't know that, we may not have any jurisdiction over that district and what they do. Though I'm, I'm guessing that's probably the case, sort of like schools, but I don't have the answer to that yet. So this is really just a, um, an early public meeting, I believe, before they start doing environmental review and, um.
Where do they want it, where is it on the ferry building?
It's on the ferry building side. It's on the ferry building side is what they're proposing right now. So it's over the existing parking lot. So it's set back from the street, I believe, a certain distance and then, um.
Does it take up the entire lot?
It doesn't take up the entire lot, but it covers a large portion of the parking lot.
Three story parking structure.
It was, it seemed to me it was only two stories, but I believe them if they said it was three, maybe the roof is a parking level two. So the, yeah, one, two, three with the, the roof being one more level.
If it's ferry district, I probably bet we don't have any dis.
That would be my first guess, but, um, but we'll.
Who owns that land? Who owns the land?
It's the Golden Gate Bridge and Ferry District.
They own their parking lot.
Yeah, and it's owned, I believe, for public facility, uh, which would normally, you know, if, if it, I think normally any sort of structure like that would probably require some type of design review, but they may be exempt from those requirements. But they will be going through their own public hearing process. They, they did the process for the downtown Centerfell, um, parking trend center. And they did a, an amazing public process, I thought, really reaching out to all members of the community and kind of going, doing a lot, a lot of public outreach that we normally don't see government do in terms of special meetings and going to different places and, um, using different formats. And so if they're doing the same type of process here, I just trust that they're going to get a lot of public input. Because they just, they just did a really excellent job for the Centerfell station. So there, I think this first meeting is just their, their first, first public meeting.
Great, thank you. Um, is, I wanted to ask if everyone was going to be here for the fourteenth. Okay, I have a question mark on that, so, but I think Brock should be back. You might be chair.
Yeah, well, it's fine. Um, it'd be nice to have Brock have input on this three hundred Alexander project because I think in our, it was, it's really an architect.
It is, yeah.
It's a really, I mean, you know, not that it's required, but it's, I mean, when you talk about the differences of six inches of plate height and you talk about four or five versus, you know, five, I mean, four twelve versus five twelve, that really aesthetically changes the look of a house. And so that's something an architect could really weigh in on better than, I think, any of us, or maybe you can.
I already read the Sowas report in detail.
In detail.
But I think seeing the updated renderings will help, will help us, yeah.
But, yeah.
Um, okay. Can we have a motion to adjourn?
I have motion to adjourn.
Can we have a second?
A second.
Oh, sell those a favor.
Yes.
All right. Motion to adjourn carries. Thank you.